... for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
I am here.
Mr. Gorman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is a special presentation. Sonia.
Good evening, Mayor Law, Council President Zwicker, members of council and guests. My name is Sonia Mailander, Community Relations and Events for the City of Renton. And it is my pleasure to present the city's 2012 and 10th anniversary of our Fourth of July celebration at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park. Our report will highlight sponsorship and event features, logistics, marketing, survey results, budget and strategies for future planning. And as we begin our presentation, I'd love to take this first opportunity to say thank you to our Mayor Dennis Law and city staff, Kelly Balcom-Bartok and Bonnie Raresich, and community members Gary Palmer and Bruce Hudson, who are professional photographers, willingly share their photos, make our presentations and our website and our print marketing. Incredible, so thank you very much. This year's event was possible, of course, with the city's support and three very significant community partners: The Landing, Sanctuary and the Reserve Apartments and Coal Creek Family YMCA. After supporting our event at the highest level for the last three years as title sponsor, we are fortunate that The Landing remained very supportive this year for a fourth year as event cosponsor. Sanctuary and the Reserve Apartments sponsored the entertainment stage. This was also our fourth year of partnership with Sanctuary and the Reserve. And we have our relationship with Coal Creek Family YMCA as our Kids Zone activity sponsor. This was their second year of sponsorship with us. Our Fourth of July event has certainly grown over time. Until 2002, it was a daytime-only event at Liberty Park. The event grew significantly in 2003 after officials continued to evaluate banning fireworks in the city limits and how to expand our community event with fireworks, day-long activities and partner support to help offset costs. The fireworks ban took effect in May 2005, and as I said, this year we celebrated our 10th anniversary at Jean Coulon Park. This year's event featured special activities for children and families. Stage entertainment, of course, included our city concert band, a vignette from the Guys and Dolls Altine Musical, contemporary folk music, blues and an evening dance band. And, of course, at 10:00 PM, a 25-minute professional fireworks display positioned from a barge out in the lake. It was wonderful to have council member Palmer and President Zwicker at our official welcome to greet the crowds, and a cast member from the Altine Musical Guys and Dolls, Samantha Hefford-Anderson, who sang the anthem. Each year, the city's team meets to review and plan for several logistics. This year, we faced a new topic we hadn't dealt with before, and that was the timing and the construction of the 520 Bridge and the approval for passage of the barge to come into South Lake Washington and where to load the fireworks shells, which could not pass through 520. So, our appreciation to fire and emergency services, and specifically Bill Flora and Dave Pargas, who took the lead and got approval from the Seattle Seahawks and the Virginia Mason Athletic Center to load the fireworks shells and ferry them out to the barge.
I haven't heard that, no.
Our discussions also include things like courtesy pickup and drop-off and load and unload in the park, variable message reader boards for notification along Lake Washington Boulevard for the street closure following the fireworks, and things like temporary light towers when the park is very dark at 10:30, the fireworks show has just ended, and we're trying to exit 20,000 people safely from Coulon Park, largely pedestrians. And, of course, we have a fairly comprehensive marketing plan: print campaign, website, social media, reader board on Maple Valley Highway, calendar listings, information to residents in Kennydale along Lake Washington Boulevard and area businesses. And, of course, we include logos and sponsor recognition and all of our marketing. And, as I said earlier, a second shout-out. We just really appreciate these fantastic photos, so thank you very, very much. And our sponsors are invited to join us in the park all day if they would like, and this year we had Coal Creek Family YMCA with an informational booth promoting their services and programs and providing a free hands-on craft-making activity for families. And our sponsors are invited to join us at the official welcome, and we had all three with us that evening: The Landing and Sanctuary and Reserve and Coal Creek Family. We made extra efforts this year to collect more event surveys. We had a 42% increase in number of respondents compared to 2011. This information helps us evaluate and plan for the future, and we had volunteers man the survey table throughout the day. You have an expanded report there in your council packet, but just to draw out three of those statistics, 62% of our survey respondents were from Renton-based zip codes and 38% considered outside the greater Renton community. Their overall experience on a scale of 1 to 5, 96% gave us a rating of 3 or higher, and 97% said they would like to attend in the future. Not a big surprise. They're always very, very high. And certainly, our fabulous Fourth is the largest one-day event we have here in Renton. And events of this scale and complexity require a lot of collaboration throughout our city departments for planning and efficient use of our department resources. And volunteers, as always, are the backbone to most programs and most events, so they joined us in the information booth, setting up decorations, the survey table and park Looking ahead, planning for the Fourth is nearly year-round. We will reach out again and hope to secure a new title sponsor, but we will also look at adding additional partners to the event cosponsor level, similar to The Landing this year. We will look at additional volunteer opportunities, and we're always taking a look at department resources and logistics and how to maintain a high-quality event that appeals to the public and meets sponsor expectations. So for a number of years, we've been tracking through project accounting the total cost of event, the investment that the city puts forward to support the event. So the total cost of event includes all event features, value of city in-kind services such as printing, or maybe even in some cases, loss of revenue such as loss of picnic shelter revenues on the Fourth, and it includes the value of staff time, including benefits. The increase from 2011 to 2012 in total cost of event is attributed to a combination of the increase in cost for the fireworks display, and within that cost is the barge, insurance for the barge, staffing for the barge and fuel, and for sustaining the quality of the fireworks show. And in regards to the cost of the fireworks display, we had not allocated additional funds for that component of our Fourth of July since 2008, so it'd been four years since we had looked to increase that portion of the budget. So it's very important for us to be aware and track the value of support that it takes for city staff to effectively and safely manage this event, but in terms of actual hard costs, the invoiced expenses, sponsorship covered 30% of that this year. These sponsorships covered children's activities, stage entertainment, fireworks display and the marketing. And we like to keep our eye on the response and value property loss from the Fire and Emergency Services Department. Each year, they track the number of incident calls and value of property loss associated with the Fourth in the greater Renton community. The increase in the number of calls from 2011 to 2012 reflects that this year, they logged all complaints as well, so customer service calls, service calls, actual calls, but each complaint as well. So they really wanted to capture all of those inquiries having to do with the Fourth of And sponsorship. The success of our fabulous Fourth is closely tied to the support and dedication of our sponsors. This year's sponsor contributions totaled $10,000, offsetting 30% of our hard costs. Sponsorships cultivate valuable partnerships and create opportunities to effectively leverage city resources with community support. So tonight, I am pleased that all three of our sponsors are here with us, with representatives. First, I'd like to say hello to Judy Smith and Jamie Green, Coal Creek Family YMCA. But we have Jamie, Jamie Green.
Okay, thank you. Well, the Y is thrilled to be a part of this event, and as a Renton citizen myself, I am extremely happy that the Y is part of our community, and we look forward to continuing to support this event for many years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's just the best announcement she could make. From our entertainment stage sponsor, Sanctuary and the Reserve, we have both of their property managers, Judy Whitcomb and Courtney Bush are here with us.
Hi, I'm Judy from Sanctuary, and I'm new to the area, but I'm very excited about the Renton area and The Landing and having a chance to work with everybody here in the future and being part of it next year.
I'm Courtney. I live in Renton, so even before starting working there, I'm already kind of ingrained in the city. We just started the end of July, so we look forward to us personally being a part of it next year rather than just our, you know, staff was a part of it this year, so.
Thanks for being here.
And certainly, last but not least, Rod Swift, representing The Landing. It's a pleasure to have him for a fourth year in a row join us on behalf of Landing and our cosponsors.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thanks again for the recognition. You know, we're proud sponsor of this event, fourth year in a row, and I can say, you know, assuredly, next year, you know, we're going to continue our sponsorship of the event. It's tremendous efforts by Sonia and her team, and it just kind of shows the sense of community in the City of Renton that we're just proud to be part of, so, thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
So that concludes our report, unless you have any questions or comments.
Council, have any questions? I have a comment. I just want to, once again, just thank our sponsors. It is such a big deal for the city and the events that we have, and the sponsors make a huge difference, and also our volunteers. I mean, our volunteers really make this a quality city, so thank you very much, and thanks to our sponsors for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to administrative report. Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items tonight, one written that I'll summarize, and then we actually have a couple of staff presentations who will follow up on some comments that were received at last week's council meeting. First, I just wanted to let the public know, council received this in your package tonight, but on September 8th, in addition to our day of service, we had the Renton's Fall Recycle Event at Renton Technical College. We had a lot of folks working from a number of departments in the city, as well as some volunteers who donated a number of hours to help run the event. We collected 71 tons of recyclable materials and 550 gallons of household hazardous waste. That was 13 more tons of recyclable materials than last year. And in addition to that, folks brought about 80 pounds of food for the Renton Food Bank. So we appreciate this event, appreciate folks' participation in it, and the idea that there's 71 tons of stuff that got recycled, that's pretty awesome. Yeah. We, I'd like to call up Terry Flatley, who is our arborist for the City of Renton, who will provide the council with some information on some work that's being done that affects some of the trees downtown. We heard comments last week expressing some concerns, and council may have received some emails, so, Mr. Flatley.
For the record, Terry Flatley, City of Renton Urban Forestry and Natural Resources Manager. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to update you on this project on South Third Street. Project started about the first week in September, and the crews, between the Public Works crews and the Community Services crews, have moved along fairly well considering the amount of traffic on South Third Street. The trees out there that we're dealing with are trees that were planted about 30 years ago. They're actually about 38 years old, and they're red maple trees. And the way this project got started was actually back in 2006. We had a severe wind in Renton, and it blew a number of the trees off-center. They were leaning, a couple were leaning on buildings. And in the process of excavating the roots from those trees following removal, we found that they were planted in culverts. So the tree was planted like in a pot, like you would in a pot, only it was in the ground, and it was a large diameter aluminum culvert. The problem with that is the roots filled that culvert space. It couldn't spread out. They couldn't support the large top that was growing, and that was the reason we surmised that a lot of them had tipped over. And the ones that didn't tip, we kept our eye on. I was down there every year, especially after windstorms, to check on them to make sure that they hadn't moved at all. And during the 2006 project, we actually took three of those trees and made the tree walls much bigger. We made them about 20 feet long along the curb line and poured new cement, and then kept our eye on that to see if we could possibly maintain these trees till they got much older than they were. In five years, they were pushing up the sidewalks again, and the reason for this is because we figured the trees are actually lifting themselves out of the ground. Not only the roots are pushing themselves up once they hit hardpan below the culvert, but also the root crown of the tree grows bigger and grows upwards and pushes the sidewalk slams. Of the 41 trees that are on South, that were on South Third Street, we're retaining 18 of those and removing 23. So we tried to retain as many trees as we could in this project, and after investigating, we found out we had to take at least 23 of them down. And then, of course, we're replacing them again. The project areas, this is the project area maps, over here on the west is Rear and Near Avenue, this is South Third, and over here is Burnett Avenue, so that's the length and scope of the project. The red symbols are the tree removals, the green are the trees that we're leaving, and then there's some other symbols for replacement trees. This is kind of the poster child, I guess you could call for the project. This is a red maple, probably 18 inches in diameter, and you can see here that the sidewalk had been wedged with asphalt several years ago. Public Works came along and they did some sidewalk grinding where the displacement occurred to prevent tripping hazards, and of course, the root crown of the tree is pushing all this up. And this area around the base of the tree is considered part of the root crown. It actually goes out three to eight feet. I put together this little diagram to kind of show you the culvert situation. So the culvert is this container right here, and the roots go down, they don't grow out, so there's no support for this tree as it gets bigger. And as the roots hit this hard and permeable surface down here, they actually starts to pull the tree out of the ground and displace in curbs and sidewalks. One thing that was kind of interesting, if you're an arborist, I guess, along the curb line and sidewalk, there were roots that were actually growing in that gap, and those are the ones that really played a part in pushing the curb line out. This is one of the trees that had been recently removed and kind of shows what I was referring to in the diagram. Here's an asphalt patch, here's some grinding over here, and then this right here is just kind of following that crack along between the sidewalk and the curb line, and this one is here as well. And when you look at that picture head-on, it really doesn't look too bad, other than the sidewalk, but when you look at it from the side, you can really see the displaced curb and what those trees are doing out there. There was just no way to save these trees because they were in those culverts. The roots are completely contained in there. The final product we're trying to get to is this example here, and this is one of the trees that was planted back in 2006 after we removed one of those that had become damaged in the windstorm. And so the previous, the existing trees that are out there now were in three-by-three cutouts, and we're enlarging these cutouts three times, so they're four-by-eight feet cutouts with tree grates. So these trees will be a medium-sized tree when mature. They'll have lots of room to grow. The root crowns will be protected by this grate essentially, and will we suffer sidewalk damage down the road? We probably will, but we're looking at 30 years again, and it won't be as significant as it was this time because we're going to allow the root crowns to expand without pushing up the curbing and the sidewalk. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gorman.
Mr. Flatley, did you do anything to break through the hardpan when you plant those? Is it possible to, so the tree roots go down and they hit hardpan, you said. Is that four feet down, or is that eight feet down, or?
It seems to be about three feet down. So most of the roots stay in the upper three feet of the soil, especially the ones that do the absorption of water and oxygen.
When you replant, can you break that hardpan to give them a boost, or?
We could break the hardpan, but again, the roots are going to stay in the upper three feet of the soil, so the hardpan really won't come into effect with this new planting because the roots will be able to spread out instead of go down and then try to come back up again.
Any thoughts as to why the culverts were in the mix the first time around?
The culverts were put there to contain the roots, basically, so they wouldn't cause sidewalk damage. And they probably did a, they probably did a pretty good job for a number of years, but eventually, you know, the push comes to shove, and the tree tries to win out over all the restrictions they place against it, and now they lost.
So much for outdated technology.
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We've got Police Chief Mark- Fire Chief. Fire Chief, Mark Peterson. Thank you. Who will respond to some, we had a couple citizens last week that expressed some concern over an incident that happened during Renton River Days, and we're just mentioned what they felt was delayed response times, and so, Chief Peterson.
Mark Peterson, Fire Chief, the Fire Department. Last week, we had a couple citizens come before the council and express some concerns, so I'd like to address those concerns tonight with you. Citizens' concerns were long response times, engine company out of quarters at a public event, lack of coordination between police and fire, and lack of GPS units in the fire apparatus. The call came in for a house fire at 3:28 in the afternoon. That was our first call of many calls. We had numerous calls. In fact, we were having calls even after units arrived on scene. Less than a minute later, we were getting calls, the house is collapsing and fully engulfed in flames, and I can explain a little bit about why that happened. 3:33, we get A-12 arrive on scene, reporting a fully engulfed house fire, and they had a lot of traffic issues on Northeast 25th Street where, yeah, Northeast 24th Street, excuse me, where people had stopped to see what was going on down the street. So they helped clear the traffic for the engine company to come in. Engine 12 arrived at the 7:08 mark, which is well within our aspirational response time goal. Within a minute, they had water on the main body of fire, and then they had a hose line on the exposure fire. Oops. So here's the primary, the building. As you can see, we have a lot of fire damage on the north side of the building in this area, where you see right in here is where the fire started. It was in an open carport area, and the fire traveled to the south, and you can see the amount of damage. We have an exposure on this side with a home, and on that end of the house has two windows that were facing the firehouse, and on this side, it kind of an angle is another home, which ended up catching fire. Here's the garage area or the carport area where the fire started. It started in a mattress. They had a lot of home furnishings in this area, plus we, you can see the two cars that were damaged. There was a lot of fire load in that area. Here's the exposure on the north side. We had fire, as you can see, it started the grass on fire and then extended up to the building here, and then it got into the attic space. First, an engine company officer, Engine 12, went in, set up their rig so that they could use their large volume nozzle on the house fire itself, and then they took a hose line into this house and extinguished the fire as it was just getting into the attic. So they saved this house from any more significant damage than into the roof rafters and on the siding here. Cause of the fire was a juvenile plant with lighter. It lit the mattress on fire. It's pretty typical as you light something on fire, especially when you're a kid, and you're going to, oh-oh, I'm going to get in trouble for this one. So he tried putting the fire out, and of course, mattresses don't go out very easy. You can think you have the fire put out, and they sit there and smolder and burn. It was leaning up against a wall, so it would have like a chimney effect to it. You had open exposed wood framing inside the carport. So after he tried to put it out, it wouldn't go out, he went in the house and didn't say anything to anybody. A neighbor came to the home and reported the fire and got everyone out of the house. Then the neighbors started reporting the fire. We had reports from down the street on Northeast 25th Street and on the backside of the fire from the smoke column. So as you can see, the mattress leaned up against the interior wall there, led to rapid fire spread to the exposed wood framing. Heavy fuel loads contributed, and of course, once the vehicles, the hoses and stuff are compromised on the fuel lines, of course, that adds more fuel to our fire. So one of the things that we look at, one of the complaints was that engine wasn't in quarters at the time, and that was true. They were down at the River Days as a part of a rotation of all the engine companies. But we leave a company in the station at the time. It happened to be A-12 that day. But there's many times where there's not a vehicle in quarters, and it can be due to heavy call volume. And as you can see, we're up to about 10 and a half calls a day average for Station 12 to where there may not be anyone in the station just because they're on emergency runs. We're also part of the public events. That's important to be a part of the public events that are taking place. That's our way of communicating with the public to find out really how we're doing and establishing relationships with the community we serve. It's very important. People want to know who's serving them. The other thing we have is training requirements, that there is just a lot of state and federal mandated training, and when we're out down at the training center, we'll put an engine company up at Station 12 to cover for the training period. But there's times, again, where calls dictate the amount of coverage we can do. As for the coordination between police and fire, it's, when we get dispatched to a fire response or an aid response, police gets a notification too. And on that day, they responded to the fire, but once they noticed it was an occult attack, that there was no traffic control issues, once we were there and had all the streets blocked, then they went ahead and canceled being on the scene there and went back to their patrol districts, patrolling patrol districts. Every day, we work with the police department very well. We do a lot of responses together, whether it's an auto accident, whether it's an aid call. All the police cars now are carrying defibrillators, and they're getting the first response on to CPR-type calls to better serve the public. The lack of GPS in the vehicles is, we kind of use old technology, and this is a sheet out of our map book, and our map books are developed by our own GIS department here in the city. They have actually more information than a GPS unit you would buy from a vendor like Fry's or Fred Meyer or whatever. We have more map layers that we need access to, and in this particular one, and I can give you a better close-up, this is the page of the fire page, but then we give a little close-up. These little red dots in here are all fire hydrants. So we know when an incident happens, the company officer, first thing he does, he opens up the map book and locates the hydrants so that he can help in his mind deploy his resources the best he can. He may not want to pass a hydrant for fear there might not be another hydrant down the road, so it's, there's a strategic use of this book. We have other map books also that show different stormwater lines and trails and the like. A commercially-made GPS unit wouldn't have all that. Also in here, you see all these little numbers in all these little grids. That's home addresses. So we know exactly where the call is on that street and how far down the street it is. So it's a little more detailed than what a commercially-made GPS unit is. All in all, our folks did a heck of a job on that fire. They not only saved the exposure fire, but they put a lot of water on the main body of fire, and as you could see by the one picture, about 50% of that house shows a lot of fire damage, but yet we were able to save the other half of the house. Though there was a lot of smoke damage and the like, there may be some things in that home that we've saved based on the initial actions of our crews. home that we've saved based on the initial actions of our crews. Are there any questions, the council, of me at this time?
Council, any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I might just comment as the chief's leaving. I think there was a question about whether or not we would do any independent review when we have incidents like these. And I think certainly if there was a situation where we thought there might be some confusion or a question on our part, we would do that and have done that. I think in this case, as the council knows, we receive, as the chief pointed out in his presentation, the dispatch record and call log from ValleyCom. That's an independent third-party organization and that gives us a very, very objective to the second detail log of the event. So, we can tell if, in fact, there was a response that was, as the chief said, outside of our normal response time and had that occurred, then we would have likely done some additional investigation. In this case, the engine responded within the timeframe that we would have expected. I think, Mayor, you pointed out last week, sometimes when you're there at an emergency, you've made the call, those seconds can seem a lot longer than they really are. And so, it can seem like a lot longer time than, in fact, seven minutes. And Mrs. Stanwell, last week, was, I think, a block away or a block and a half away and so she may not have been aware of when the initial call came in and what the activity was and may not have even known that an aid car was already unseen before the engine arrived. But, we do look at those and do have that record and we do follow up. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next is moving on to audience comment. We have several people signed up to address the council. When I read your name, please come to the podium and give your name and city of residence for the record. And you have five minutes. We have a timer right here next to the city clerk. Paul from Rolling Hills. Paul, I'm not going to try to ruin your last name. I'm afraid I won't pronounce it correctly, so.
I'm sorry about that. My name is Oulet, O-U-E-L-L-E-T-T-E. It's a French name.
I should know that.
Yeah, you did know that, yeah. No, I will save my comments. I heard the presentation tonight on the library. My concern, I'm a civil engineer, all the retired, worked in construction management all my life. And so, I was very interested in the library, Cedar River Library situation and especially in viewing schematics and so on. I reserve my questions and so on until I attend the meeting tomorrow night, presentation.
Okay.
And I appreciate Mr. Corman's comment and also Mr. Taylor's comments suggesting that the meetings, review meetings ought to transpire more than once a month. Because by then, I know in design, in design work, a lot grows fast in a month's time. A lot changes. I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Goyd.
Yes, I'm Richard Goyd, 1632 Jones Drive Southeast, up in the Rolling Hills area. I apologize, I got here late. I was under the impression that the library was going to be discussed at 7:00 instead of 5:30. I didn't find out it was 5:30 until I got here tonight. So, I'll, if I have any comments, I'll try to attend tomorrow evening and listen to the presentation at that time, so. But, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Beth Asher. Well, she's coming up, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, the committee of the whole is televised and so that would be on TV, so you have the opportunity to watch the presentation. We can, you can call the mayor's office and we can give you the times when that would be rebroadcast.
Oh, Beth Asher. I live in Renton and I had a couple of questions on the community input for the library. I wanted to say I approve of all the information we got tonight. That was great. It's more information than the public has ever gotten when they have requested it and it was wonderful. But, I would like to also say that we don't want to give up our two public forums to these monthly information sessions. We still think that we should have the two required public forums or three that we did not have for Cedar River Library. We're very concerned about that. And the other thing is, I'd like to know where this input will go. I really would like to have these monthly meetings, but I think they should be at the beginning of the month or they should be every two weeks. Once a month is not enough and especially if you put it at the end of the month, boy, by that time, you could be pretty far down the road and input is just out the door. And where will the input go? So, Community Services will take the input, we'll have a concern, and what will happen? There's our concern. What will happen? If we can't get people on the design team through our lab or by you guys using the clause for consultants in the ILA and allowing some of our experts to sit in, then where will citizen input go? Where will it actually go? How will it actually impact the process or even be able to have an impact on the process? That's my main concern there. And I'd like to find a way for us to work through this because I know that you guys want to make the process transparent and we also want that. And I know that you don't want to discuss the library every council session. I can see that. You do have other things to do. Maybe we need another fire engine up at that station. So, but I just don't think dead-end input into Community Services is going to work. And to point up where will the input go, I would like to say the library page has not changed since we had the election. The website at the city doesn't get updated very often. And so, if it's going to be, go to the city website, how often? How often will it get updated? How's it going to be interactive with KCLS? I mean, to me, updated means you did it. It's there. You did it. It's there. I have to do updates for my clients on a daily basis and that means I have to re-code, I have to pop images, I have to do everything. They can call me and I have to do it right now. So, there's our concern. Where will the input go? Will it even be used and how will it be communicated back and how often? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Phyllis Forrester.
Thank you for the report and the response from the Urban Forestry Program. And I'm going to read you just a few quotes from the Urban and Community Forestry Development Plan, August 2009, a 93-page document that's on the Renton website. Recognition in 2008, for the first time, the City of Renton achieved Tree City USA status for the effort in urban forestry programming. This award is given annually by the National Arbor Foundation in cooperation with the National Association of State Foresters and the USDA Forest Service. Renton now can place Tree City USA signs at the entrances to show visitors that Renton cares about its environment and dedicated to preserving quality lifestyle, including trees, I would assume. And I don't think you want to put up any of those signs right now because it is, we don't have a very good face we're presenting. Another quote, benefits of trees. Trees provide communities with environmental, social, and economic benefits referred to as ecosystem services. Some of these include: Tree shade reduces incidence of skin cancer, deterrent to climate change, filter pollutants and produce oxygen, reduce the heat and island effect, controls stormwater runoff and soil erosion, decrease heating and cooling costs, improves real estate. In addition, trees increase property values and attract shoppers and increase businesses and property activity. Considering what's happening on Rainier, that's, I don't think that was considered very much because those trees were not pushing up sidewalks. Most of them were not. And next quote, improving forest composition to natural areas, removal of invasive such as blackberry and ivy is needed. The ivy on, this is my comment now, the ivy on the trees around Renton is pretty prevalent, especially in front, on the entrance side of the library. Some of it has been removed on one side. And when I've asked about this, my, the answer has been budget constrictions. Well, we have a lot of budget going into tree removal now and replacement of sidewalks and curbs, so I'm assuming that the budget constraints have now gone away and that we can maybe get some of that ivy removed so that we can retain those trees. They're a habitat all along the river as well. Further quote, unregulated tree planting in neighborhoods was customary. Residential trees planted mainly with ornamental cherry and purple leaf plum trees, which I think are very pretty, were eventually topped by residents. Public work struggled with resulting bushy trees. Street sweeping proved difficult and both vehicles and trees were necessarily damaged. Public safety was being compromised by trees blocking streetlights. I don't know about the streetlights. I think that can probably be pruned around, but I fail to see the part of public safety that a plum tree, the blossoms that create a beautiful scene and are, the ones that are missing now across from Safeway, they are not going to present anything anymore. But, I think this tree sweepers is not a real good move on, because leaves are going to fall. And if you have all pine trees, that's going to be the other thing that they're going to have to, the pine leaves. So, I would like to see that those be maintained. Protecting the public has been paramount concern of the city departments despite some controversy that has ensued. It often takes an incident to occur before a hazard is recognized. In 1997, this is going back a ways, but it means what were happening today. In 1997, 65 mature big-leaf maples along Maple Valley Highway were removed by the city after several tree limbs, several tree limbs fell temporarily, closing highway and the Maplewood Golf Course entrance. After careful assessment of their condition, it was determined that the maples posed a significant risk to the public safety. While there was public outcry, which I can certainly imagine, at the removal, some residents were praised, praised it. Now, well, some citizens don't like trees anyway. They like cement. 65 mature big-leaf maples were taken out because a few tree limbs fell and they blocked the highway for a little bit. That's what we have removal for and I just can't even imagine the loss of those gorgeous maples. Sidewalks weren't there. We need for our city, Renton government, to pay real close attention to the plans that are presented. When you have to take out trees like right in front of McClendon and on down Rainier, you need to find people that can design around them instead of destroying them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have eight items for your consideration. We're pulling item I, which is under the Transportation Division for a $5 million grant that was coming our way possibly from the Federal Aviation Administration that's been put on hold and for another project and so we're hoping to get similar grants in the future. So, we have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that a council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I'd like to remove item D.
Okay. Any other items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move the council concur with the consent agenda minus item D and having removed item I. Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Corman. The council concur with the consent agenda minus item I and item D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Ms. Brier?
Yes, item D was the contract with Native Green Landscapes for clearing and improvements at the May Creek Trail property was scheduled to go to the Finance Committee and I'd like to ask that it would go with the council concur. As you can imagine, this is some work that's going to be done along May Creek and we have a fish window to deal with and the sooner that they can get on site and start doing some of the work, the better it will be. So, with that, I'd like to move that council concur with this contract.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Mr. Corman, that item D be a council concur item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to have the clerk read into the record the Committee of the Whole Committee Report of September 17, 2012, which is the Library Guiding Principles as discussed earlier this evening.
Committee of the Whole Committee Report, Library Guiding Principles. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence with the following guiding principles. These principles are intended to reaffirm and clarify assignment of responsibilities, coordination, communication, and parameters with respect to the development of the two new Renton City Libraries at the Cedar River and Highlands locations, consistent with existing inter-local agreements between KCLS and the city. The City of Renton and King County Library System, KCLS, have previously agreed and remain committed to providing two new library facilities in the city for the benefit of the citizens of Renton and the surrounding communities. The new libraries will be located over the Cedar River at Liberty Park and on Sunset Boulevard in the Highlands and will be designed to be consistent with or superior in form, function, and quality of other recently constructed libraries in the KCLS system. Both facilities will be designed and constructed within the budget approved and allocated for each building. As previously agreed through inter-local agreement based on demonstrated knowledge, leadership, and experience in building and providing quality library services, KCLS will be the lead agency to manage and oversee the design and construction of both libraries. The City of Renton's Community Services and Community and Economic Development Departments will facilitate and support KCLS by assisting in design and construction oversight and attaining all necessary permits for the successful completion of the libraries. In addition to the open houses and presentations outlined in the inter-local agreement, the city will provide opportunities at regular intervals to update and receive input from city residents and applicable boards, commissions, and committees. This will include monthly open house meetings designed to provide the latest information to the public and receive their feedback and providing current information on the city and KCLS websites. The city and KCLS will endeavor to incorporate library design concepts and programming elements desired by the public as outlined in the inter-local agreement. The city and KCLS will jointly select the final design for both libraries. Other specific assignments and responsibilities remain as provided and defined in the adopted inter-local agreement between KCLS and the city. This report is unsigned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I'm not positive on procedure. I have a small edit that I'd like to make. I don't know if I need to start with the motion before we make that edit. City Attorney, or can I just adjust the edit?
As it's not signed, you can just ask for an editorial change now and it doesn't require a motion.
Okay. I'd like to propose an editorial change. If you're counting down the bullet points to bullet point six, that begins in addition to the open houses and presentations outlined. Second sentence reads, "This will include monthly open house," and I've heard obviously from council members and public, "if we could change monthly to regular and then we'll let that be defined then by Community Services."
Good.
In making then that edit, I would move that the council concur in the Committee of the Whole Committee Report. Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Committee of the Whole Report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
And, Mr. Mayor, then I have, we could forward that to Madam Clerk, assigned committee report. And that is all on unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Zwicker, and thank you to the council and especially thank you to our staff who have worked very hard to come up with a guiding principle list that really involves the community and takes care of the interest of all the people involved, so thank you very much. Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have three Transportation Committee Reports. Roseanne.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report, bid award Taxway Bravo System Rehabilitation. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the low bidder icon materials, the contract in the amount of $2,364,463.61 for the Taxway Bravo System Rehabilitation North Portion Reconstruction and Airfield Signage Modifications Project. A federal grant in the amount of $2.75 million will cover 90% of the cost of this project and the committee recommends that $305,555.56 be transferred from the airports and fund balance to cover the other 10% of the project. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the contract. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move that council concur in the committee report?
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report, 2013-2018 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program and Arterial Street Plan Update. The Transportation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the annual updates to the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, TIP 2013 through 2018, and approve the 2012 Arterial Street Plan. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the three committee members.
Move the council concur in the committee report?
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report, New Ground Lease with Boss Air LLC. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a new-
new 40-year ground lease with Boss Air LLC. This lease will cover the seven years remaining on the existing lease plus 33 additional years. Boss Air will demolish one old hangar, Building 289, and construct a new hangar and office building. Boss Air will retrofit the other hangar, Building 287. This will allow Boss Air's main tenant, Ace Aviation, to further their aircraft maintenance business. Along with the reconstruction of their hangar buildings, Boss Air LLC will increase the size of their leased area by approximately 29,552 square feet in order to better accommodate their customers' aircraft. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the lease. This is signed by the three committee members.
Move the council concur in the committee report?
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment. There's a lot of good work involved in the activities defined by these reports, some significant airport improvements, Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, which is always important to the city, and I really want to thank the transportation staff and the city attorney's office. Some of these, we spent multiple meetings going over the material and getting it just right, so thanks to everybody that worked hard on that.
Thank you, Mr. Corman, appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
Yes, there's one Finance Committee Report.
Finance Committee Report, Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on September 17, 2012, Claim Vouchers 315-113 through 315-405, six wire transfers, and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $4,312,083.55. And payroll vouchers include 808 direct deposits and 92 payroll checks totaling $1,663,384.20. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have four resolutions this evening.
The first resolution regards the interlocal agreement with agencies for their NPDES-2 permit. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with the cities of Auburn, Bainbridge Island, Bellevue, Burlington, Des Moines, Everett, Issaquah, Kent, Mount Vernon, Sea Tax, Snoqualmie, and Sumner, and Cowalts County regarding legal services.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move the council concur with the resolution as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council adopt the resolution as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution regards the interlocal agreement with agencies regarding F-Line Rapid Ride Fiber Optic. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County and the cities of Virian, Sea Tax, and Takwilla entitled Agreement on the Design, Construction, Ownership, and Maintenance of the F-Line Rapid Ride Fiber Optic Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move the council adopt the resolution as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council adopt the resolution as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution regards an interlocal with King County regarding the F-Line Rapid Line Intelligent Transportation System. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County entitled Rapid Ride Intelligence Transportation System Agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move the council adopt the resolution as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council adopt the resolution as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the last resolution regards the Six-Year TIP. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, updating the city's Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program 2013 through 2018.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the council adopt the resolution as read? Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Swicker, that council adopt the resolution as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to new business, Mr. Swicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items to call out. On Monday, September 24, 2012, beginning at 5:00 PM in the Council Conferencing Center, will be two items of our Committee of the Whole agenda, first one being regional committee updates, and the second item being emerging issues in economic development and transportation. Also, though, as a part of that Committee of the Whole meeting, then moving at around 6:00 PM over here to the council chambers, will be the third item of that Committee of the Whole meeting, and that'll be the Reach Center of Hope Day Center proposal. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee will be meeting on Monday, September 24 at 4:00 PM in the Council Conference Room, and we will be discussing water fluoridation. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Mr. Mayor, no new business, however. I want to report, because I made this comment around a couple of council people. Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to the South Correction, and it's either our new jail that we're partners in, the Five Cities, not only did they get a tour, but they had a celebration of their first year in work, and gave out awards and promotions, and it was very well attended by their employees, and got a tour to watch the work, actual working of it. And one of the comments of the people that went through their camp, they couldn't believe that the building had been in use as a jail for a year, because it's as clean today as it was the day they opened it, taking such good care of it. After making the comment about getting a tour, several other council people says, geez, how do I get a tour? So, I would like to recommend that maybe the administration could set up a tour for those council people that would like to.
We can do it as a group, or we can do it as individuals, any way you'd like to do it, anytime.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to audience comments, anybody would like to address the council? Yes, sir. Come forward, give your name. Come to the podium. Oh. Oh, okay. Was there anybody else? Okay.
It's Beth Asher again, sorry. I had one more question. I've been sitting there thinking about the reimbursement process, and it seems to me that it's, that if KCLS goes ahead and pays out before the city even looks at what has been submitted, and then the city's basically stuck for the money, no matter what, why can't you jointly look at these demands for payment, rather than make it a circular process where, hey, it's already gone, so might as well pay it? That's just my thought. When I have multiple contracts with vendors and, you know, wholesalers or retailers, we do not submit to someone else. The person who's going to pay out is either right there doing it, or they are a party to it at the time it is submitted. So, that's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. And council? Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I know we're about to adjourn here, but I just saw someone walk in, and I just wanted to have him just to make a nod. Your son won the game, Mr. Bray?
My point is practice.
Great. That's all. Will we adjourn?
Before we adjourn, just want to remind everybody, the Special Highlands and Cedar River Library Open House tomorrow, 7:00 in the conferencing center across the hall at 6:00 PM. So, it's been moved by Mr. Swicker, seconded by, oh. Okay, that's.
Mr. Wollett, again, Paul Wollett. As a resident of 35 years and so on, and civil engineering construction manager, listening to the presentation and so on by KCLS, I would like to offer my services to the council committee members, or anyone, or staff, to be a representative for the residents of committee, and be a good neighbor. And I see that the King County library system has all the technical people, but I don't see anything within the Renton, other than staff, unless they have engineering personnel or construction personnel to review some of these schematics and so on. And so, I'm much suggesting that you would have volunteer technical personnel available to you as the council members or staff and so on, to do these plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be available.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Richard Bray. I live in the Renton Highlands. Didn't think I was going to be here tonight, though we got, the practice just got done. I just want to make a comment, and I'd missed the early part, so forgive me if I say something that's already been addressed, then I apologize for that. But I just want to really say that, you know, I'm a Renton resident, and some of you have heard me come here before you, and I appreciate you indulging me one more time. It's really important that we get our library done right according to what our residents want to have, which means there should be the maximum amount of input opportunities for people to give that. And again, maybe discuss that in more detail tonight, so again, I apologize if that has gone over. But I would really implore you that, you know, this is, the residence library, we should have the maximum say of what happens with it. And we have a group of people who are willing to help make sure that we can get this library done, working cooperatively with the city and King County library system, so that we can do it for the most cost-effective manner, in a way that's going to bring the whole community together. So, you know, I just really implore you to all, that we all could work in that spirit. And again, forgive me if you've already discussed some of this more in detail, but I just wanted to really implore you to consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I didn't catch the correction to the time tomorrow as being 6:00 till 7:30.
6:00 to 7:30. Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Swicker, seconded by Mr. Person, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
The Renton Municipal Arts Commission, a slew of volunteer